At this time, I'll call the Garden Grove Housing Authority to order. If you have the vote.
Commissioner Beckles?
Present.
Commissioner Broadwater?
Present.
Commissioner Jones?
Here.
Commissioner Nguyen?
Here.
Commissioner O'Connor?
Here.
Vice Chair Dalton?
Here.
Chair Beard?
Here. Oral communications, none. Okay, item two is the consent calendar. Anyone care to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion second, call for the vote.
Motion receives six yes votes with Commissioner Beckles voting no.
Sorry.
Motion received seven yes votes.
Shovel maker.
Great words.
Next items, public hearings, none. Items for consideration, any?
No.
Seeing none. Matters from the commissioners. Air no matters. Move for adjournment.
All right. Okay.
Have a nice weekend. Good morning.
I also grow closer as a group and nurture the bonds of community. Fill us with your grace as we make decisions that affect the residents of Garden Grove. Continue to remind us that all we do here today, all that we accomplish, is for the pursuit of truth, for the greater glory of you, and for the service of humanity. We ask these things in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Please follow me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. At this time, we have oral communications for the council, the sanitary district, and the successor agency. Oral communications. Joan Riddle.
Thank you. My name is Joan Riddle, and I've lived in Garden Grove since 1953, so I'm very concerned about the city. I'm a member of a committee at the Garden Grove United Methodist Church, and they met with you before because they've been involved in senior transportation. We're very pleased to be working with the city and other agencies to bring that about. We've changed our name now. We're called ALMA, soul in Spanish, but it also means Association of Local Missions and Ministries in Action in Garden Grove. And this began, the committee began, when the Reverend Bob Rodenberg joined the organization or brought in the organization of the Orange County Congregation Community Organization, and Sandra Ortega is with us tonight from that organization, and they've been very helpful with us. We began working on the homeless issue in 2010, and we noticed that there were six homeless people living and sleeping on the church property, the Garden Grove Methodist Church. And we began to ask what services were available to help chronic homeless individuals. After over a year of research, the group has learned much about what is available, as well as what gaps remain in the system of care. The Garden Grove United Methodist Church, ALMA, has spent nearly two years researching the causes of homelessness, services related to homelessness, and what gaps still exist. We've talked to the mayor, we've talked to the police chief, we've met with some of the police force, talking about how they handle people who are homeless and wandering about. And I volunteer at the Garden Grove Library, the regional library, and the restrooms there are frequently used by homeless people during all the day. We've met also with Connie Marx, who is the Garden Grove School District Community Liaison, Bob Serentz, City of Anaheim Homeless Community Services Supervisor, with Glenda Thomas House. We've met with the Illumination Foundation, and we've been very enthusiastic about Paul Leon, who's working with Stanton now, and he has said he's more than willing to help us with the city if we can do something basic in this homeless area. And we've been attending the meetings of the Ending Homelessness in 2020 at the county, the committee that's chaired by Supervisor John Morlock. And we went to the housing authority because we wanted to talk about where money could be found, and they didn't seem to think there was a lot we could get, but we keep trying. We've been to the Magnolia Community Center, the Buena Clinton Community Center, and we went to the Laguna Beach Homeless Center, and I would say that we've got a packet of information for you with much more detail about what we found out in those various places, because we thought, for example, the Laguna Beach shelter was a very interesting kind of a place to be. We have recommendations that we'd like to work with you and hope with others, and we think of it as the city being kind of the guiding light for all of us in the city, and so we hope we can work together. But we have these seven recommendations. We'd like to establish a committee of nonprofits, community members, and other stakeholders with the city liaison person to report regularly to the city council regarding implementation of these recommendations, and to explore other long-term cost-saving approaches to addressing homelessness in Garden Grove. We also support the development of a multi-service center operated by a nonprofit organization to provide centralized and coordinated services, as well as emergency and transitional beds for homeless individuals. Direct city staff, or extend hours of public restrooms in the city to reduce the need for urination and defecation in public. Direct the city staff and attorney, city attorney, to utilize the homeless court, veterans court, and mental health court systems when applicable and appropriate to help homeless persons. Initiate discussion with the neighboring cities to explore expanding the number of emergency shelter beds and permanent supportive housing using the Housing First model. Continue to support further training for police officers and other city staff who engage the homeless to redirect toward appropriate services and referrals to conserve the city's resources. And make every effort to coordinate with the county plan to end homelessness by 2020. One of the things that may happen with that group is that they are trying to discover all of the places where there are programs that make services. One of the problems we found in all the places we went to, they had different lists of what services were available very often. So these are the things that we would like you to talk about, and we certainly would appreciate any help we can be to. Shirley Kellogg now has a letter that we and a number of citizens in the city have signed.
Okay, thank you. Shirley, you're next.
Mayor Dalton and council members, thank you for listening to us today. We created a letter that was signed by many community members that have acknowledged the importance of addressing the homelessness issue. We are concerned about the plight of the homeless people we see on the streets and in public spaces in Garden Grove. While we understand that there may not be, they may not be residents of the city, we know that many of them have had connections here through family, school, and employment. We are pleased that our police department is striving to treat the homeless people in humane and helpful and dignified ways, and that tragic incidents such as neighboring cities have had have been prevented here. We've not experienced that here. We know that other community centers are assisting homeless families, and we recognize the work being done by churches and other civic groups to provide food and clothing to help people without homes. We understand the constraints of budget and staffing that make it difficult for you to provide services. However, we urge you to seek ways in which Garden Grove can do its part, as other cities in the county are doing. To provide as much support as possible to this segment of our population and helping Orange County to end homelessness by 2020. Thank you.
Thank you very much. George Christensen?
My name is George Christensen. I'm a forty-year resident of Garden Grove. I want to address an article that was in the LA Times this past week, Garden Grove's Family Ties. I'm sure the board is fully aware of this, but for the members of the public here, I'll give a brief summary. This says, despite large number of applicants and antinephism policy, kin of two council members receive panel seats. And the son of the mayor, Robert Dalton, was appointed as traffic commissioner, and the husband, Joseph Novin, husband of Dana, Dana, excuse me, Dana Nguyen, was appointed as planning commissioner. This was a result of the planning commissioner's resignation, apparently, and there was then a vacant council seat, and the planning commissioner then moved to that, was appointed to that council seat. This apparently went against a voter-mandated advisory policy that the voters voted on a few years ago, that the next person in line on the previous election for council seat would fill that position. The Times article indicated that Mayor Dalton indicated this as an advisory measure and has no binding effect. I'm quite sure that's the case, but still, the public voted that that was their preferred method of handling this to fill seats on the council. The article points out that perception matters. I'm concerned that, I don't think we're anywhere near this, but I don't want the Garden Grove to be classified with Bell and City of Vernon and Montebello in terms of how things are handled. I think things should be above board. The article points out that perception matters, and I ask that the traffic and planning positions be vacated and refilled with legitimate, proper hiring practices. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin McCario.
Good evening, council, staff, and Garden Grove residents. The article that was referred to by the previous speaker was called Political Incest here in Garden Grove, and was written by the Pulitzer Award-winning Ruben Vivas. And it did allude to the actual appointments for commissions, but there also, what could also, as you mentioned in the article, Mayor Dalton, is that there was room to tighten up the policy and kind of relook and examine things, and I think that would be a wise course. I also think that something that wasn't covered in the article, which has to do with the hiring practices, meaning family members working as city staff members in one capacity or another should also be looked at very carefully, just as appointments for commissions are voluntary, when family members are hired for staff, they are actually receiving monies. So I think the whole, the whole policy should be readdressed and looked at so that there isn't any appearance of impropriety, because we want to have, as he said, the perception of being above board. I'm glad to see that on the agenda, you have a payment schedule for the redevelopment agency. I think everyone will be glad to see these millions of dollars be paid off at some point in time, that there won't be any more new projects under redevelopment, because that has been retired as of February 1st, so that we can actually return to a capitalistic system, rather than having redevelopment giving tens of millions of dollars towards developers, corporate interests. So I will be thrilled when this is eventually paid for in decades, but I'm glad to see there's a payment schedule. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, I'll close our communications at this time. And I'll recess the council and go to the successor agency.
Okay, we'll convene the agency. Would you like to call roll?
Member Broadwater?
Here.
Member Dalton?
Here.
Member Nguyen?
Here.
Vice Chair Beard?
Here.
Chair Jones?
Here. We had a closed session conference, but there's no reportable action. Consent items, maybe you'd like to pull anything, or do I hear a motion?
So move.
Second.
Call the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
No public hearing items, items for consideration four A.
Mr. Chairman, four A is an agreement to purchase property on Chaucer Road, and Greg Blodgett is here to give a staff report on this item.
Mr. Chairman, members of the successor agency, tonight we have for your consideration acquisition of 12239 Chaucer Road. On June 12th, 2011, the agency entered into a DDA with land and design as developer of the site, known as Site C, for the development of three-to-four-hundred-room upper upscale hotel and up to sixty-five-hundred square foot of new restaurant and retail space. Land design is an enforceable obligation, and the DDA is an enforceable obligation, which requires the agency to acquire this property and convey it to the developer. Staff has received a proposal from the owners offering to sell the property to the successor agency, and the salient deal points are as follows. Purchase price is $445,000 to acquire the fee interest title. Escrow is to close within thirty days. At this time, staff recommends that the City of Garden Grove Successor Agency approve the acquisition for purchase of 12239 Chaucer Road. Also authorize the successor agency, on behalf of the successor agency, execute the acquisition agreement and related pertinent documents, and authorize the secretary and successor agency to accept the grant deed, and also authorize a finance director to draw a warrant an amount of redevelopment funds, an amount of $445,000, and also necessary closing cost. This concludes my staff report.
Any questions or comments for staff?
Move the item.
Second.
Call the vote. Matters from?
Which?
Councilmember Nguyen?
Oh, I have it. Sorry.
Motion received five yes votes.
Any comments from, or matters from, agency members? Okay, seeing none, we are adjourned. Back to city council.
Now, a call to order the Garden Grove Sanitary District, and let the record show that all members are present. Consent items.
Do I get to do this?
We have a new president.
Oh, you know what? I'm sorry about that. I apologize.
That's okay.
Go ahead.
I accept your apology.
Thank you.
Let's go to two A.
That's the consent calendar. Mr. President, it's recommended that these items be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested.
Entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
No public hearings, no answer consideration?
Five yes votes.
Oh, yeah. Get ahead of you, didn't I? Okay, we'll adjourn until March 27th, 2012, at 6:30 PM.
Okay, we'll reconvene the council, and there was a closed session item. However, there's no reportable action taken, so we'll go to consent items.
Mr. Mayor, it's recommended that items 6A through 6H be acted on simultaneously unless a separate discussion is requested by a member.
I move to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
Second, call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Okay, public hearings.
Mr. Mayor, your public hearing tonight is to consider a general plan amendment regarding property at 9721 East 11th Street. Maria Parra is here to give a staff report on this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of the city council, before you tonight, it's a request for a general plan amendment to change the land use designation of a 24,000-square-foot parcel located at 9721 11th Street from low-medium-density residential to low-density residential, and his own change to rezone the property from R3, multiple-family residential, to R1, single-family residential with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet, in order to facilitate a four-lot residential subdivision. The site is currently vacant and unapproved. In 2004, the property's land use designation was changed from low-density residential to medium-density residential, and the property was rezoned from R1-6, single-family residential, to R3 for the purpose of constructing an eight-unit townhouse development. However, the project was never constructed. The proposed development, which is contingent upon the city council approving the proposed general plan amendment and the zone change, consists of dividing the parcels into four lots for the purpose of constructing a two-story, single-family, a single-family home on each lot. The homes will be approximately 3,500 square feet in size and will consist of four bedrooms and three bathrooms. Each home has been designed to comply with the development standards of the R1-6 zone. The project is located in a single-family residential area where the minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet. Three of the proposed lots will have a lot size of 6,000 square feet, while the fourth lot will consist of 5,800 square feet, which the planning commission approved the variance at the January 19th, 2012 meeting. The proposed general plan amendment and the zone change will be consistent with the existing land use and zoning designations of the surrounding residential lots, and will facilitate the development of the proposed single-family homes. Therefore, staff recommends that the city council adopt the negative declaration and adopt the attached resolutions entitled, a resolution of the city council of the city of Garden Grove adopting a negative declaration and approving general plan amendment number GPA-1-12A, and introduce and conduct the first reading of the attached ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove adopting a negative declaration and approving zone change amendment number A-163-12 to change the zoning from R3, multiple-family residential, to R1, single-family residential with a minimum lot size of 6,000 square feet.
Thank you. Any questions for staff?
Are there garages in this project?
Yes, each home has a two-car and closed garage, and also provides two open guest parking spaces along the driveway.
Thank you. Okay, since there's no other questions for staff, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion and second. Call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Seven B.
Mr. Mayor, seven B is a public hearing to consider an amendment to the Garden Grove Municipal Code. Mr. Clark is here to give a staff report on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Fratton, honorable mayor and members of the city council. This is the penultimate title to be revised in the municipal code update. Like the prior revision, this amends the Garden Grove Municipal Code to remove obsolete references, conforms language to current city organization and practices, and makes the code consistent with changes in state and federal laws. But this ordinance also contains substantive amendments in several chapters. In Chapter 16, the requirement that a so-titled assistant city manager be appointed is deleted. This is something the city council can consider for approval at any time. In Chapter 21, language is clarified that all appointments to boards and commissions are made by the mayor with the consent of the council, as required by Government Code Section 4605. And in Chapter 32, removal of Main Street Commissioners is changed from a four-fifths vote to a three-fifths vote of the council to conform it to all other commissions. Lastly, in Chapter 44, a number of sections relating to human resources include substantive changes, including adding definitions for currently undefined terms, authorizing the city manager to appoint new employees at any salary step, revising and clarifying the provisions relating to city employee probationary periods, specifying that assignment pay may be taken into account when placing a promoted employee on a new salary scale, clarifying the leave accrual rates and seniority that apply to reinstated employees, specifying that paid outside employment must be expressly approved by the employee's department head, and making modifications for consistency and conformance to the subsections relating to employee discipline. Mr. Mayor, please allow me to read the title into the record. An ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove amending Title II of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to remove obsolete references to conform references to current city organization and practices, to make consistent with recent changes in state and federal laws, to revise and update the provisions relating to the personnel system, and to make other non-substantive changes. That concludes my staff report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? Okay, seeing none, I'll open a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this matter? Okay, no one, so I'll close the public hearing and entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Items for consideration.
Mr. Mayor, you have another property for acquisition on Chaucer Road, and Greg Blodgett is here to give a staff report on this item.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, tonight we have for your consideration a purchase and sale agreement for 12233 Chaucer Road. Purchase of this property is required as a mitigation measure associated with the upper upscale hotel to be built on Site C. Staff did receive a proposal from the owners offering to sell this subject property. The salient deal points are as follows. A purchase price of $445,000 to acquire the fee title interest. Escrow will close within thirty days. And at this time, staff recommends to approve the acquisition of 12233 Chaucer Road and authorize city managers to execute pertinent documents and make modifications as needed on behalf of the city of Garden Grove, and authorize the city clerk to accept the grant deed on behalf of the city of Garden Grove, and also to authorize a finance director to withdraw a warrant amount of $445,000 in funds necessary for closing cost from available proceeds of city assets and properties and city funds. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you. Any questions for staff? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Ordinance presented for second reading.
Mr. Mayor, item 10A is ordinance number 2809, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove amending Section 14.12.010 of Chapter 14.12 of Title 14 of the municipal code relating to water rates and charges.
Any questions for staff?
Move the issue.
Second.
Have a motion, second. Call for the vote.
Motion received five yes votes.
Ten B.
Ten B is ordinance number 2810, an ordinance of the city council of the city of Garden Grove approving amendment number A-165-11, an amendment to plan unit development number PUD 105-71, revision 90, to allow dray, freight, or trucking yard subject to the approval of a conditional use permit.
Any questions for staff?
No. Move to approve.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second, call for the vote.
I'm sorry, I accidentally turned the power. I'm sorry, I accidentally turned the power off.
What was Rosemary? That was Richard Nixon's secretary that...
Motion receive five yes votes.
Okay, 10C.
10C is ordinance number 2811, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Garden Grove amending Title 14 of the Garden Grove Municipal Code to remove obsolete references to conform references to current city organization and practices, to make consistent with recent changes in state and federal laws, and to make other non-substantive changes.
So move.
Have a motion.
Second.
And a second, call for the vote.
Motion receive five yes votes.
Okay, where it matters, Mr. Broadwater.
Well, I'd like to wish happy birthday to Mrs. Jones, and tell her that we're delighted she had another birthday. And I think that's about it for me.
Thank you. Ms. Gwynn.
I also like to wish Manny a happy birthday, and probably get her a bigger box of chocolate this time, so Mrs. Jones doesn't have to get it for... Anyway, I will buy that in Garden Grove. We have a Sees candy store in Garden Grove. It's delicious. And remind everyone to buy in Garden Grove, especially March is coming up. We're going to have St. Patrick's Day, so that's another reason to go out and dine with your family and buy in Garden Grove. In the coming week, I'll be going to Washington, DC on the human rights issues with my husband, Joe Dovin, and hopefully, we will get to squeeze some city issues in there on the two days that we visit Washington, DC, and I'll come back and report to you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones.
Yeah, just happy birthday month to my wife, Manny. And the funny little side story is, we were in a restaurant not too long ago with the boys, and the waitress says, "Oh, how old are you guys?" And Jane says, "Well, I'm five, and he's three, and mommy is," and he blurts out her age right through the middle of the restaurant. So I don't think she's happy to have more birthdays at this point, but she's still 29. That's her story. She's sticking to it.
Sorry.
Happy birthday to Manny. Something I want to bring up, which will be developing issue, is the Garden Grove School District, excuse me, is going through a major restoration of several sites. So down the road, as it's materializes, and we have more information, I think we, as a city, should work with them and get the word out. I know I've been receiving some information through the school. It's very preliminary right now, but basically, they're going to take one of the schools on Knott and use that as a staging area, have schools relocate for a year's time, so individual school sites for an entire year period will be using that facility. And then while that's being, while they're there, their original school will be redeveloped or renovated, thank you. And so with that, as it goes along, we should get the word out to the public. There'd be impact on the traffic, and so on and so forth, and we want to work with the school district, which we always have. They're good partners in the community. So just as it materializes, let's get the word out, and we can have maybe a presentation from them. I'm not sure if they have a schedule of all the schools yet, but it'll impact the entire city, so I think we should work with them as a city, as the impact to citizens. So, and with that, that's it.
Thank you. Last Saturday, West Garden Grove Little League Parade was in full force, and they really do a great job out there. The kids, everybody's really involved, and it certainly is something that makes us proud to be in Garden Grove. Every year, it gets bigger and better, and I wrote in a Model T for it, and Bruce asked me if I was around when they were born, I mean, I was around when they were made, and I said, "Well, I'm not quite that old." And I'm not going to say anything about you, Bruce. And I want to say happy birthday to Manny, and we'll adjourn the meeting until the next council meeting, Tuesday, March 13th, at 6 o'clock PM in this building. Thank you.